Welcome, everyone. I Council President Walsh call the October 23 city council meeting to order. Mayor Polly has an excused absence tonight, so I will be serving as Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Hunt also has an excused absence this evening. The second meeting in October was moved one week later than normal to recognize the Bahai Holy Day Birth of the Bob, which occurred on Monday, October 16. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings, so both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I welcome you to join me. The next item on our agenda is public comments, and I will note there are no members of the public in the room. Clerk, is there anyone online indicating?
No.
We have no virtual attendees, other than city staff.
Okay. Well, always appreciated when people are able to join us, when we've got big items, all of that. But if somebody does want to write in, we always appreciate public comments over email. You can email citycouncil@isicuaqua.gov. Okay, and then, let's see. The next agenda item is our consent calendar, and the mayor does not have any remarks on tonight's consent calendar items. Are there any committee chairs or chair designees who would like to report on any of the consent calendar items? No? No? Okay. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been removed?
Yes.
Yes.
Reviewed.
Reviewed.
That's why I was confused.
They have not been removed. Thank you. Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any items from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Deputy Councilmember, President?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented in tonight's agenda.
Second.
Thank you. The motion to approve the consent calendar as presented has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? No? Wait, you've got your mic on, so I wasn't sure.
Anywhere.
Fantastic. Hearing none, the motion before council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay. Next item of business is our regular business item, AB 8699, the 2024 Arch Budget and Work Program. And I'd like to invite Senior Planner Kristen Leeson to the lectern. Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Kristen Leeson, Senior Planner with the Long Range Division, Community Planning and Development. And every year, our city council, all city councils, who are members of the Arch Jurisdiction or Regional Coalition for Housing, are invited to review and approve the next year's budget and work program. So tonight, we actually have Lindsay Masters, who's the Executive Director of Arch, who is here to make a presentation and talk to you about both of those items.
Let me just pull up a PowerPoint real quick. Go and see that, okay. So I'm really happy to be here. It's been some time since I've been able to come to Issaquah and talk about Arch's annual budget and work program. I've been here for a couple of other items, but this is a nice opportunity to kind of give a comprehensive overview of what Arch has been doing and some of our priorities. So briefly, I'll be covering our proposed administrative budget for 2024, very high-level highlights from there, but happy to answer more questions about that. And then I'll spend a little more time going in-depth through the key priorities that are the Arch Executive Board have elevated for next year in 2024, and then a little bit of focus on some of the things we've been doing in Issaquah as a part of our work program as well. So each year, the Executive Board collaborates as sort of a coalition of jurisdictions around what our priorities for our budget should be, whether we should recommend any increases or new programs or services or staffing. This year, the board discussed the fact that we are starting a strategic planning process in 2023, and that it would be a good time to pause on any new services or staff, but we wanted to keep continued levels of staffing to maintain all the current programs and services that we've been providing. There was one new funding add at the request of the Bellevue City Attorney's Office to add some additional funding around legal services. They provide those to us as part of their in-kind contribution, and there's been some growth in that workload and some need to bring in some additional support. Altogether, Issaquah's contribution towards our budget for 2024 is 126,000, which is about 5.6% of our total budget. You can see here also, there's a picture of the newly redeveloped Together Center, which I'm just happy to share in as many places as I can now that it's a completed project with 280 units of affordable housing in it and revamped offices for 22 different nonprofits, of which Arch is one of the tenants there. So now I'll switch gears and talk about the five or six priorities that were highlighted in our work program for next year. Some of these are carryover from the last year, and some of them are a new priority for us. So the first of those is that we are planning to have some kind of implementation out of the strategic planning process that's underway currently. We started that process this summer, and we're expecting to wrap it up sometime in the first quarter of next year, so that would be coming to you as some kind of recommendations following that process. We're also getting ready to have a stakeholder survey and invite input on a range of the strategies that might be under consideration for that plan, and would welcome your all participation in that. A couple other priorities that are sort of linked together. So we've had in our work plan that we would help to facilitate members to consider dedicated revenue proposals to help support investment in affordable housing. As you know, we've had a trust fund program going back to Arch's founding 30 years ago that pools all of our members' local funds together into a program to invest dollars in affordable housing. And while that's been a wildly successful strategy, it's also had some limitations as the cost of projects and development has gone up significantly, but the fund hasn't kept up with that. So looking at other revenue options and proposals has been a focus for us, really going back to 2015. We built on some work from last year where we held a series of focus groups with elected officials to get their input on the potential range of revenue options that might be supported. And we had a recommendation out of that process last year to consider advocacy around a real estate excise tax option. There was a bill this year that gained some support, and a lot of Arch members went out and advocated very strongly for that. And you can see an editorial here that came out as a result of that work, but the bill ultimately did not pass. So it remains something that we are focused on and looking at ways to support our members and thinking about how to advocate for more tools. So related to that, we had a new priority this year around convening our members around legislative priorities beyond just revenue. We wanted to add maybe one more topic to that, not provide a wholly comprehensive housing legislative agenda, but really just a couple of targeted priorities that we felt would have the most impact on your ability to actually create affordable housing in your community. So we added to that a topic around transit-oriented development, which was another really important bill that was under debate in the last legislative session and would have really significant ramifications for how you're planning around transit and whether or how affordable housing is included in that. So we had a great process this year. We worked with staff from pretty much all the member jurisdictions. We held a workshop this summer. We invited input from city lobbyists. We got input around what was likely to be returning to the legislature for those two particular bills, and we came out of that process with a couple of recommendations. So those will be coming your way, I think, to discuss at a future meeting. So the next priority was something, again, that kind of rose up last year as an emerging issue for us, and that's about the rising rents within affordable housing. So we wanted to tackle this as sort of a comprehensive policy issue around what are some policies that we could recommend to address that within your local programs. So we've been at it, Wally could probably remember as well, for about a year now. We launched a policy development process starting last fall to look at the whole range of potential options to try to address that issue. We've had a variety of different stakeholders participate and weigh in on the options. The last couple months prior to October, we did a ton of public outreach and engagement and a public survey to get the public's input on that issue as well, a lot of outreach to renters and people living in affordable housing. So we've got a ton of really good data and input, and the Executive Board is sort of weighing some final options to pass on as recommendations as well. So that should be another topic coming your way in the future.
Just a moment. We've got a question. Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. Just clarifying, I like charts and graphs, and I like the Pac-Man one there, but I'm not sure what the slices equal. So the question is, have you or someone you know ever moved due to rent? And I don't know which is yes, no, and which is maybe.
Well, I wonder what your guess is. The red is yes. The yellow is no, and I believe the green is no answer.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have to fix that in the slides that got cut off. Yeah, like I said, we've got a ton of really good data that came from that survey and a significant number of folks who've known someone who's had to move due to rent increase have were able to provide input on this policy. The photo there, now that I'm focusing on what's in the slide, the photo there is a community meeting we also held up in the Together Center to invite people to come and learn about the issue and answer, get their questions answered and whatnot. The next priority is one we have had on the work program for a few years as a significant priority, and that's to help our members facilitate really important special projects, particularly transit-oriented development projects on public lands. Couple examples that we put a lot of work into this year are on this slide. One is on a city-owned property in Kenmore that the city donated, or is in the process of donating, made available at no cost, and also provided about half of their ARPA funding as an upfront investment. We helped them to design the RFP, the scoring criteria, review the applications, and we also helped facilitate an investment of about $3 million in Arch funds into that project. So it's well on its way. It was a great collaboration with a city that wanted to see a project move really quickly and break ground within, I think their goal was 12 or 18 months. We said, let's try to meet that. So it was a great outcome. They selected Plymouth Housing as the developer, and they're in the process of finalizing all their financing and permits to build that project. They are still hoping to get it underway by the end of this year, might be early next year. The other project on the bottom is a Sound Transit-owned property right next to the future overlay light rail station. We also worked with the City of Redmond there to help them do some sort of financial feasibility modeling around what might be possible in the way of affordable housing models, and then that helped to inform the RFP that both the city and Arch participated in with Sound Transit. They got some really great proposals there as well and selected Bellwether Housing as the lead developer. So the plan there is for 333 units, really big affordable project right next to the light rail with some affordable community, excuse me, affordable commercial spaces on the ground floor as well. So really exciting project. There's still a ways to go to assemble all the financing, but we're going to continue to be involved in that. These are just a couple of examples of projects that really popped this year. There's some others in the works that we've been working closely with Bellevue on, another property in Kenmore that issued an RFP this year, and earliest conversations with some other cities as well. Final couple priorities is generally that, you know, this was this year and next year are the years where we recognize members are trying to complete their comprehensive plan updates. We are trying to facilitate technical assistance on those, including some related state mandates that are coming from the legislature. And then finally, we want to not lose sight of our focus on continuing to steward the existing affordable housing that all our members have already created, where we provide the monitoring services and functions. I included this chart just as an illustration of how significantly these programs have grown and how much affordable housing has been added. 2019 was the year that we added a staff position to help monitor rental, affordable rental properties and do the compliance monitoring. We still have that staff position, but you can see how there's been significant growth in the number of projects that we are monitoring, which is a good thing. So now I'll switch gears and talk a bit about some of the things we've been partnering with staff here in Issaquah on and some of our hopes for the future. So we have been offering some support on comp plan and code amendment. We did provide some housing data for both the comp plan update, as well as we provide an annual update for the housing report card. You can see that chart there, which illustrates the projected housing needs by income level and some of the significant gaps we have in those lower income ranges. We are also currently helping to provide some technical analysis and advice around existing inclusionary programs and evaluating some potential pioneer options in central Issaquah. We're doing this in part using a modeling tool that we helped to, we were assisted by some national experts to help design that builds on a lot of Arch's past efforts in helping cities sort of evaluate the value of incentives against the cost of affordable housing requirements. So we worked with Bay Area economics and street-level advisors, and we had a partnership with ULI this year to engage the development community in that as well. But I imagine there's a question here, so.
There is.
Yeah, can you go back to the last slide? We threw that pretty quickly. But what's this actually telling us?
So the bar represents how many units you currently have at all of those income levels. That's the blue, your supply in 2020. And then where you have a deficit, there is sort of a hashed pattern that shows you how much additional need there is, including your projected need through 2044.
So it's basically telling us that at 80% and above, we're set?
Pretty close.
A little bit and greater than 120, but that's interesting because that missing middle, 80 to 120. And AMI for a family of four is 105, 110? What's the number currently?
It is up to 146,000 now.
140? When did that happen?
In the last few years, it's shot up significantly, which is part of what's driving the rent increases in affordable housing.
So it's 146 for a family of four, and how many is it for a family of three?
Get back to you on that.
Okay. A family of four, it's 146. Okay.
I will say, this chart doesn't distinguish between rental and for-sale housing, and so we need to see a really big deficit in middle-income ownership options.
Right. All right. Okay, that would help explain it. And it's for a family of four at 150, and it's what percentage, 30%, 35%, 40% of income?
To be considered affordable.
Yeah? What percentage is it?
30%.
30%? Okay. All right. Thank you.
So again, we are utilizing some financial modeling tools that we've developed and working closely with the staff to analyze what some options might be to help encourage development and potentially make some updates to your existing incentive programs going there. We also, again, do care a lot about supporting projects that are special projects in Issaquah. We've been, income for a family of three, median income is 131,800. We have been involved from way back in the beginning with the Trailhead project and have been holding in place a funding commitment for that project that we're really looking forward to moving forward with. We also, I just mentioned, I think are going to be positioned really well to assist with that because of the close partnership that we try to maintain with Housing Authority. We recently closed financing for them on another significant redevelopment project up in Kirkland that's really exciting and sort of gave us a feel for the unique needs of the Housing Authority and how they approach development projects. We also, again, when there are private projects going through your permitting process or your land use process that do have affordable housing requirements based on your local policies, we partner with your planning staff there as well to make sure that the requirements are implemented and codified in legal agreements. So this is an example we were excited to get involved with, that it's going to be a for-sale development called Tibbetts Crossing that will have two affordable homes available as a duplex. So we expect that we'll probably be pricing that and starting marketing activities next year. The actual sale might be 2025, just depending on their timeline. Part of what we do as well, when there are those projects that have affordable units required, in addition to working with the builder on pricing the homes, we also do all of the marketing and application intake for the for-sale projects. I wanted to highlight the West Ridge Development Agreement as a really great success story and example of the collaboration that we do. There were a total of 48 affordable homes required there. 10 of those were in townhomes and 38 were flats. There were additional over 100 market rate homes built there as well. The affordability was arranged between 60 and 120% of median income, and because of the large number of homes, the marketing process really stretched out over a pretty long time period. There were also really huge demand for these homes, so I just can't really understate how many people were interested in applying. We worked really hard because of, again, what a significant opportunity this was, to try to develop some local partnerships and get applicants who live or work in Issaquah to apply. We also reflect that in our scoring criteria to try to prioritize people who have ties in the community. I just end with a couple of slides of testimonials from some of the homebuyers, now homeowners, who live up there in West Ridge. And there were some where they were currently living in the Highlands community and were able to have this opportunity to move into homeownership and stay and sort of maintain those ties. We also, you know, require that folks moving into the new construction are first-time homebuyers, so for everybody, this is their first time owning a home. And then we also have been excited to see people move from other income-restricted housing. So we did also market to other affordable housing providers who own rental properties to see if there were renters eligible to move up into homeownership. So it's a ton of great stories out of that project, and we're really excited that it's part of the community now.
Got a question before you move on.
Can you refresh me? What's the terms on the affordability on this, on this development?
On the homeownership developments, it's 50 years. And then when there's a resale, we renew the covenant, so the 50 years resets. Our goal is perpetuity.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any other questions.
I see a lot of smiles. We love getting all of the information, but go ahead, Deputy Counsel President.
Thanks so much for the presentation, and thanks for coming out tonight. Really appreciate you having, or you being here. I'd love to hear more about, you know, your strategic planning efforts that you guys are going through. Do you guys have any kind of desired outcomes, or what's the vision for that process, and what sparked it?
Yeah, well, I think what sparked it was we went through about four or five years of making kind of incremental changes and additions to our staffing and services. We also saw the demand for our services sort of explode sort of all at once from a lot of different cities wanting to get more involved and be doing more and planning more, and each city kind of starting to collect additional funding sources. So just a lot of growth and interest and desire to do more from our members, and then also kind of hitting a point where we had tackled a lot of the backlog of issues of programs that were understaffed, that we had already sort of had committed to and wanted to get those right-sized before we could take a more comprehensive look at things. This was also sort of a good year for starting this process because we are coming up on a biennial budget cycle next year, so we thought about some timing that way. And there were a number of goals, I think, that the board identified from the get-go. There's been sort of efforts like this in Arch's past history, probably not something quite so formal as a strategic plan, but just opportunities to bring the coalition back together and recommit to how we work together, how we collaborate, and the value of that collaboration. You can't really take it for granted, so you kind of have to bring folks back together and sort of renew the commitment. There was also a desire to really clarify Arch's role because we tend to be involved in lots of different things in different ways in different jurisdictions, and so just having a nice framework and clarity around what our roles and our focus would be, and then also really help us to be able to prioritize going forward. So we are an organization that likes to say yes to everything and always provide support whenever a city asks us to do that, but it also leaves us in a position of juggling quite a lot, so really helping us to strategize where we're going to be most effective.
Thank you. Would that be a simple board-approved document, or is that something that has to go around to the city?
So it will be something that we ask the board to adopt ultimately, but to the extent there's an implementation that would be, you know, recommending any changes in our budget or our work program, that would then ultimately come back to you. Potentially, there could be changes to the inter-local agreement. That would also be something that all councils have to approve.
Councilmember Marks?
Do we know anything about the racial equity element to the missing housing in our city?
Say more about your question.
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, what the housing situation looks like for our Hispanic residents and our Asian Pacific Islander, you know, different components of the community. But I'm particularly wondering about for the Hispanic community because we've seen data that says that our Hispanic community isn't as affluent as our Caucasian community. And so was just curious if we know what the housing landscape looks like for some of the, for some of the specific groups within our community.
I've certainly seen this data recently for King County. I would suspect Issaquah has some similar trends that have sort of homeownership rates and renter rates by demographic group, and I think you're correct there if you want to chime in on the specific Issaquah data as well, but yeah.
Actually, I was going to let you know, this is Kristen Leeson, Senior Planner. We have a consultant who we are working with who is helping us to pull that information together, but we don't have it yet. When we do, it'll be part of the comprehensive plan.
Can I ask when we might hope to see that?
I just asked the same question today, so I'll let you know.
Tell them council asked.
Okay.
Yes, I think just globally, there's been a well-documented disparity in homeownership rates by race and ethnicity. rates by race and ethnicity.
So I'll take a moment for a question here as well. I know Arch is the older version, but have you, what kind of work do you do with Skip, the South King County? Have you learned anything from their startup and the collaboration that they have down there?
Yeah, we do try to meet on a, on a regular basis, both with Skip and with SHAPE, the organization down in Pierce County. Each has a little bit of a different identity, even though our, sort of our DNA is the same in how we were formed and our, our mission. But I certainly learned sort of about how it's not a one-size-fits-all model. You know, SHAPE, for example, really has a legislative focus. That's a lot of what their members sort of aligned around and came together to try to, to try to lean into as their strategy, so coordinating on legislative advocacy, and they've been very effective with that. With Skip, and I'd say with both, both organizations, we're also privileged to be able to give a lot of advice and examples and templates of how Arch cities have done this work together. So we've been trying to be a resource to those, those coalitions as well and, but just sort of sharing, sharing sort of opportunities and challenges and things they're, they're working with. I'd say the other thing is our governance is a little bit different. So we were set up to have sort of our governance be on the executive side with either city managers or strong mayors or their delegates. Both the other organizations have some elected officials, more, more of a mix of elected officials than others on their board, so it does change sort of the dynamic. And that's something we're, we're looking at and thinking about, I think, in the future, how to sort of have council members and elected bodies really be a powerful part of Arch as well.
Not seeing any other questions. So I know the, one of the points of having you out here was, I believe, to move the budget. So I'm wondering, do we have anyone ready to make a motion? Go ahead.
I will move to approve the 2024 Administrative Budget and Work Program for a Regional Coalition for Housing, Arch, as presented. Second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion or questions on this? Okay, go ahead.
Just to say, thanks for all the hard work. I appreciate all the planning, too, that's going into this kind of strategic planning effort that's going on. I think that could be so helpful for the partnership and for the organization and just your vision, looking ahead and even describing how council members can be more involved is really great to hear, too. And I'm eager to see what comes out of that process and eager to see what Arch is able to do together with Issaquah staff over the next few years. Thanks again, and I'm happy to approve the motion.
I am not seeing anybody else, so, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah. This is, this has been an interesting conversation this evening. I'm absolutely, obviously, going to support this. I, I still, I think we as a city need to think about this, you know, what does 80% mean? What does 120% mean? You know, we have a, we have policies that talk about putting it 80 to 100, you know, and, and sort of patting ourselves on the back if we do some 80 to 100. But if, if 100% is $150,000 for, for a family of four, then we're not necessarily getting what I thought we were getting an hour ago. So that's a, it's, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit to, to put that in context because it's really, you know, like I said, what I, what I thought we were addressing at 80% AMI is not what we're actually addressing. Like, and that doesn't, that doesn't change my support for this bill, but I just, I, since we're on the topic, I think we really need to think about what we're asking from our potential developers in the city. And is it, is it what we think it is and where we want to put, where we want to put our dollars? Is, yeah, anyhow. Sorry, I just wanted to share that as, as mulling it over in my head.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I'm fully in support of the budget. I would just like to acknowledge Mayor Pauli's involvement with the board and Wally Bobkowitz, he's going to the board meetings on a regular basis. Appreciate you being involved and representing the city. Look forward to having the conversation about opportunities for elected officials to also be involved in this process. Thank you for all the work you're doing.
So the motion ahead of us is to approve the 2024 Administrative Budget and Work Plan for Regional Coalition for Housing, Arch, as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None? So that passes unanimously, six to zero. Thank you, Lindsay. Okay, so the next item is new business item, ID 1546, New Business Request, Credit Card Processing Fees, Cost Recovery, introduced by myself. So Tisha, should I just take it on, talk it through? Okay, just making, making sure. This is my first new business request item. Okay, so this item came to me because I have been a huge fan of online utility billing and the moment it was available, I signed up. And then I realized I could sign up with a credit card and that meant that there were going to be a lot of people signing up with a credit card. And anytime you pay with a credit card, there's merchant fees, processing fees. Usually it ranges, you know, 2%, 3%, 4% depending on what the amount is. And so I realized, oh my gosh, if everybody signed up with a credit card for utility billing, we don't have a policy in place in order to handle that additional cost. And so then I talked to some staff and did my own research and realized that there's other areas of the city where we take credit cards where we don't really have a policy. Now, those amounts may not be as big. One example of that is recreation classes, but we have others that could be even bigger. Our permit center. With our permits, people can currently pay via credit card, which means that we could be getting plus or minus 3% or whatever that payment processing fee is, and we don't really know what that is. So what I would like to ask the administration to do is just create a policy. And it doesn't, the policy doesn't have to be always make the user aware of what those fees are and pay them explicitly. But we should have a policy that either says we develop our fees, understanding that we're, that the cost of doing business includes staffing, processing fees, et cetera, or especially on things where, you know, like our enterprise funds, they're supposed to be self-sufficient. And if we're taking 3% out of that, that can be problematic. So I would just like to have a policy out there that makes a decision about whether or not, when we're setting fees, you know, either it has to be at a certain amount or for certain funds. I don't know where that line is, but I think this is something that we should consider, both as we're recognizing that we're going to go into another multi-year budget, but also this utility billing is a new concept out there. And then the other one that's going to come up at some point in the future is business and occupation tax, which would be another one that would have online payments, and some of those can be very large. So I think I've included a few different links in my memo. Kirkland has a policy, they have listed down there. And then the other experience that I've had as a business, when I do my state business taxes, if I'm paying those and I use ACH, the Automatic Clearinghouse for a bank, it's free. But if I pay via credit card, it lets me know I have to pay the additional 3% fee. But I think there's ways to accomplish this that doesn't add costs to a user if they want to do online payments, but still allows us to have a policy around either fee recovery or fee inclusion inside of certain costs. At this point, because we don't have a policy, we've just eaten the cost. And I don't think that's fair to other taxpayers. Questions? Yes?
So I think it's a fascinating idea and I, what I think I hear you saying is you're not advocating one way or the other. You're saying, let's develop a consistent and clear policy that we can apply across the city so people know what to expect. And I think that makes a lot of sense to have that consistency and clarity. Not sure how I feel on the policy itself, but that's, that's for another day's discussion.
Yeah, so it was, is the idea that, that we would want to create a policy or characterize the actual impact of revenue and have a call?
I think the concept is first, we need to know what the impact is. I mean, even beyond that, one of the staff members reached out to me after I put this in and said, this is really valuable because right now, if I'm going to launch a new fee program, I don't know how I should approach credit card fees. And so even if it isn't a big impact to our bottom line, I think we should have this in preparation for future things that come online. We're going to have some new public records fees coming on. We're going to have the new business and occupation. So I think it would be useful for future staff in that aspect. But then again, it's also just the concept, we don't have to treat every single fee or cost the same. We, we don't need to be out here necessarily penny-pinching and making people recognize the, the cost of doing business, but in some cases, it may make sense to do so. Any other questions, comments? So again, this, with our new business request is just, do we want the administration to come back with a response over this is how much time it would take and here's the burden we think it is, so then we can make a decision on that? And Councilmember DeMichele, did you have a?
Yep.
So you said comments or questions? Shall we make a motion and then we can make comments, right?
Yes.
I will move, if that's all right with everybody. I move to forward the Credit Card Processing Fees new business item to the November 20th council meeting for a preliminary staff response.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Now, comments?
Aha. I know that the, the whole issue of merchant fees is really becoming an issue that's really, and I'm coming from a much smaller perspective than the city of Issaquah, but nonprofits are really looking at this issue because the fees can really add up and it starts to take a huge chunk out of your operating costs for, you know, and so I've noticed, for example, my church now asks you to voluntarily pay those fees. I know a lot of nonprofits are asking you to voluntarily do it when you make a donation, those kinds of things that are recognizing that these fees add up over time. So this is a much bigger arena for this, but I think it's definitely worth doing our research on so that we have some facts to deal with. And secondly, yes, I think it would be helpful to staff and, and the community as well to know that we've got a, a consistent way of dealing with merchant fees. So I will support this, the motion that I just made.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, so, let's see. I don't know. Let me grab the motion so that I can repeat it back to everybody. Okay, the motion is to forward the Credit Card Processing Fees new business item to the November 20th council meeting for a preliminary staff response. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, six to zero. Does the administration have what they need to come back and respond? Yes. Okay, sounds great. So looking at our next item, we've got committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you very much. The next Cascade Water Alliance board meeting will be held on October 25th, 3:30 PM. Information can be found on the Cascade Water Alliance website for how to log on to that meeting if you're interested. I'm going to make an announcement for November 10th. I know it's a little bit off in the future, but the Veterans Day event for the VFW is November 10th. It's not on the 11th, it's on the 10th, and it's at 11:00 AM. They're doing it on the 10th because it is the day that the students get off from school. So I know that's a little out of order, but I thought I'd put that in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. So my apologies, this is a lengthy report, but there is a lot going on with the Eastside Human Services Forum. So on October 12th, I chaired the Eastside Human Services Forum monthly board meeting, and the board adopted the 2024, their 2024-2029 Strategic Plan, which was the culmination of a six-month planning process with both the board members and staff members. I shared the plan with the council shortly after that meeting and should have had an opportunity to read it. The forum is also engaging in a search for a new executive director with a timeline of hiring before the end of the year. In addition, at the last meeting, we appointed an advocacy task force to work out policy around forum advocacy practices, which has been an issue that has repeatedly come up, and we're going to tackle that straightforwardly and see if we can come up with a process that we can all agree on. And finally, the board engaged in a discussion about the impacts of the fentanyl crisis on local communities and organizations and identified some preliminary steps for future actions. And then on October 16th, the Eastside Human Services Forum held an online discussion on the topic, it's so exciting, of improving cash flow and staff retention for Eastside Human Services agencies. But despite that terrible title, it turned out to be an outstanding forum, and we had some 38 participants from all of the east side cities, and it dealt with the challenges that are facing small and emerging nonprofits under the current funding formulas that we use, and especially the reimbursement model that is used consistently across, across municipalities, and some of the barriers that that creates for our smaller organizations and our emerging organizations. So it was a great discussion and we're seeing if we can get permission to have the recording of that discussion made public, and if we can, I will share that with the council and hope that you watch at least the meaty part of that discussion. And also, I've talked with the city administrator about some of the ideas that came out of the forum, which there's a pilot going on in the city of Bellevue and another one in Kirkland to see if we can address some of the issues that have been raised. Then, so that's the Eastside Human Services Forum. On October the 13th, we held an Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting and heard a presentation from PSRC on the Regional Safety Plan. And we also are starting Legislative Priorities Subcommittee, and under good order, we'll discuss that, some of the input that you might provide into that. And then finally, the Regional Transit Committee met on October 18th with reports on the progress of rapid ride routes K and R and an update on the first year of the youth fare program. Just a reminder that starting a year ago, youth 18 and younger can ride Metro or any of its seven partner agencies everywhere for free. The Metro General Manager reported that in September, there were 250,000 riders, I'm sorry, excuse me, and, which is a 9% gain over last year. And they also are achieving 99% reliability now that they trimmed the system. Thank you, I've got one here, Lindsay, thank you. So anyway, that was an improvement that they were happy to report, and that ends my report. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember? Councilmember Hunt has an excused absence, so Councilmember Ray.
I have no report this evening, thank you.
Moves on to Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee did meet on Wednesday, October 11th, at Renton City Hall. We had no, we took no action. We had a number of discussions, had a particularly lively discussion around the proposed King County Cultural Access Sales Tax, to be a point one percent tax increase. There was, there were a number of concerns, as always, regressive sales taxes are no fun. There's, whenever there's a giant pile of money like this, there's always a question of how, what's the oversight going to look like? And there was a concern that a somewhat similar levy measure had been put in front of the public and had failed previously. So it was, there's a lot of good that could come from it, but there was also quite, quite a bit of concern. But, you know, the council's going to, the King County Council's going to do what King County Council's going to do. So, and there's no Council Services Safety and Parks Committee meeting this month. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Hall.
Thanks. The next meeting of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors is Wednesday, November 8th, at 4 p.m. instead of Thursday. It's moving to Wednesday because of Veterans Day. And that'll be at our headquarters on Newport Way. Also, just a heads up that at our last board meeting, we did approve the mid-biennial budget adjustments. Again, no changes to partner contributions were made to any of the partners, including Issaquah. There are a few just kind of interesting tidbits, though, that I do want to share with the council. So I don't have the notes in front of me, so I'm going to put it in an email. And I owe, I owe you all an email. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. For my report, the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board met on October 5th. We had the first of what will be many conversations over the next year on regional growth centers. So regional growth centers are kind of having their complan moment of monitoring and potentially redesignation. We've got a few regional growth centers around the area that have blown past their growth targets, and then some that aren't meeting their growth targets and aren't making, making progress. And so the discussion is really going to come down to, do we want to create three tiers rather than two tiers? Do we want to de-designate some potential regional and urban growth centers? Or how do we want to handle that? So this is something I will be paying close attention to. The next meeting is next week on November 2nd. It will be a continuation of that conversation, plus a 2023 housing monitoring report and a report on black home ownership initiatives. And that concludes my report. Going to go over to the mayor's report. An executive session will be held to discuss pending and potential litigation per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110, PRN 1, PRNI. The item is expected to take approximately 15 minutes and no action is anticipated follow in open session. We've got a few upcoming community events. The Farm Fresh Market, featuring Iola Farms, will run Saturdays, October 21st to December 2nd, from 9 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the Historic Shell Station. Locals and visitors can take advantage of seasonal flowers and support local farmers. Cougar Mountain Zoo's Halloween. Join the Cougar Mountain Zoo for spooky fun on Saturday, October 28th, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. Prepare for a costume contest, pumpkin scavenger hunt, trick-or-treating, plus more. Kids ages two to 12 in costume get free admission. So go visit Cougar Mountain Zoo. Get your tickets online today by booking for any time on Cougar Mountain Zoo's website and select October 28th. Also on October 28th, if you're more in the mood for zombies rather than a zoo, from 1:30 to 4:30 p.m., awaken your inner zombie with the Issaquah Downtown Association and plan to delight diners, drivers, and spectators on Front Street. Zombies of all ages are invited to come and crawl from Historic Shell Station to City Hall. You don't have to crawl, you can amble away, anything, yeah. Events at the Historic Shell Station include Zombie Makeover Station, sponsored by Wicked Beauty, dance practice, and zombie dance on the City Hall steps, and contests with prizes for the best zombie human and zombie dog photos. The event is free, open to all ages and zombies of all skill levels. Tickets can be found online through the city of Issaquah's website. This one's for a little bit of the younger folks. The Teddy Bear Hike, all peeping with Jacob Two Trees. Celebrate the season with the Isqwa Alps Trail Club as we pay a visit to our favorite troll, Jacob Two Trees. This family-friendly hike on Sunday, October 29th, from 2 to 4 p.m. along the Rainier Trail, is meant for the young at heart, so come in costume. Starting at East Sunset Way Trailhead, kids will learn about how Jacob came to be as they explore the wetlands of Tiger Mountain. Families can depart separately after meeting Jacob or return with our hike leader via the outlined route and learn more about the Isqwa Alps. Registration is required and can be found on isqwaalps.org. And another holiday event, Boo at the Barn, on Sunday, October 29th, from 5 to 9 p.m. at Pickering Barn, the city will hold an all-ages Halloween extravaganza. Kids can dare to try our oozing gooey sensory play, very exciting there, win prizes at our carnival games, and then romp through the Happy Hollows for treats and no tricks. We'll have food trucks, magical market vendors, a costume contest, and plenty of opportunities for spooky family fun. We are also offering a sensory-friendly hour at the barn from 4 to 5 p.m. We will limit attendance during this hour. Common sensory inputs such as noise, flashing lights, and crowds will be reduced for fun and enjoyable experience for all. General admission to Boo at the Barn will begin at 5 p.m. There will be a $5 suggested donation for entry to this event. Okay, that's the announcements, the mayor's report. Good of the order, I'll start in on upcoming council meetings, and then we can discuss anything else. October 30th, the City Council Committee of the Whole anticipated agenda items include the 2023-2024 Mid-Biennium Budget Adjustment. November 6th, regular council meeting, anticipated agenda items include public records fee schedule, public hearing, and intelligent transportation system plan. November 9th, special city council meeting, community listening session for the Newport neighborhood. So we welcome anybody from the Newport neighborhood or the surrounds, 6:30 p.m. at the King County Library Service Center on Newport Way. And I'm looking back over at my good of the order items. Just a request, if we haven't talked to you about SCA, Sound Cities Association, appointments and things that you're willing to serve on from a regional level, let us know. We're going to get back to the administration. Those are ultimately due November 13th. Next. Item on my list, the pumpkin derby, we're doing great on our decoration and attachments and all of that. I encourage everybody to come out on the 31st and watch as our pumpkin and cart make it all the way down the derby, together intact in one piece. And then, reminder to save the date for Holiday Social on November 28th. Anything else there? Nope. Okay, going back, so, oh, two items. Start with Barb, then Councilmember Joe.
Okay. As I said earlier, the Eastside Transportation Partnership is working on its legislative priorities again. And the Subcommittee that is going to be cleaning up the language and, and doing all of that will be meeting next week sometime. So I wanted to give the council opportunity to provide any input into those legislative priorities. And I think I can do this real quickly. The 2023 legislative priorities are the ones that we'll build on. And so support infrastructure improvements to maximize the effectiveness of I-405, upgrades to state highway and regional corridors, new revenue for mission and critical maintenance and improvements at the local level, ensuring investments in new technologies, alternative modes, and environmental stewardship are the big buckets that we, we were dealing with. And so, and under that last one, there were safety projects, the multimodal corridors, and vehicle electrification were the three main things under there. So if there's a, anything that anybody would like to suggest right now, that's fine. Or send me an email before, next, next Monday, I believe, is our meeting, so. Did you want to say something?
Deputy Councilmember Hall.
I just wonder if there's, did you mention anything about like workforce or the, kind of the transportation maintenance workforce in Washington or anything?
No. Would you like to add that?
I know, you know, that's been a significant challenge for WASD the last couple of years too, so it might be worth adding something to that.
Okay.
I'll double down on that if the staffing is particularly focused on maintenance rather than building new, because that's where we have certainly seen it in the city of Issaquah.
Yeah.
Okay. So if anybody else has any feedback, we can always email it out, so, sounds good.
Yeah, happy to advocate for that. And I'll get back to you. You'll see, you'll see the draft when it gets put together as well. All right, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I'll just bring to the council's attention another Isqwa Alps Trail Club event. They're having a public forum on forest carbon and carbon credits on October 25th, 6 to 9 p.m. at Blakely Hall near Isqwa Highlands. I, I would bring it up because our, our city staff looks like will be participating. And as you may remember, we did receive an award from PSRC for our carbon credit program that was put together by the administration and city administrator Bobkowitz. And I think it's important that we continue to watch how carbon credits develop as we do have a great deal of forested land in our hills that we need to caretake and take care of along the way, but also make sure that we're getting the maximum environmental credits for the work that we do. So I'll just alert you to that event. Thank you.
Fantastic, sounds good. Okay, so if there is nothing else good of the order, I think the next item on our agenda is an executive session. So that's ID 1542, Executive Session for Pending and Potential Litigation Per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110, PRN 1, PRNI. The city council will now recess into executive discussion, executive session to discuss that item that I just mentioned. The item is expected to take approximately, I've seen two different numbers here, 15 and 30, what are we putting it down at? 15 minutes. No, and action is anticipated follow in open session. Please note, executive sessions are closed to the public. We will now recess into executive session at 8:03 p.m. I ask the clerk to move the city council and any relevant staff into a separate session within this meeting. Anyone who's not part of the closed session will remain in the meeting. You're welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened.